Of course, he also plays video games and likes to watch TV shows like Pokemon. Understandable, too. Frank's goal for the future is to have a job involving math and science. He might want to be an engineer to build machines. His principal, Tammy Brady, says Frank is a terrific kid who will someday be an outstanding man. That's a nice endorsement. Welcome, Frank.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did you get one, Tim?
That's good, thank you.
All right, come on here a little bit, so you can see everybody. All right, so he's going to introduce the people who came with him today. Is your sister?
Um, Faith.
That's your dad.
I'm Dad.
And Jill. Hello. And Jill, in full disclosure, is actually my cousin, and she didn't tell me she was coming today. That was a big surprise.
Surprise.
Yeah. Thank you so much for coming. Now, Faith has softball practice.
Yes.
So even as cold as it is, we're going to send her and send off the family into the cold, and thank you so much for coming today.
We would like to say thank you very much, Mrs. Wilson. A big honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Keep up the good work. I don't know if I want to go out and play softball in this weather. All right, our next order of business. All right, oh, wow. You need to go next door and see the rest of the family.
Thank you very much.
All right. So I have another great pleasure today, and that is to reintroduce Mr. Jason Haas and swear him in as our new board member. So, want to come up? It's almost too late to say no. All right, can you raise your right hand? Mr. Haas, do you solemnly swear you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, that you will perform faithfully the duties of the member of the Board of Education and the Akron School District, Summit County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the law, the law is now in effect and herein after enacted during your continuance and said office and until your successor is elected and qualified, effective immediately on January 1st, 2016.
Thank you.
All right, congratulations. Thank you. All right. It's a warmest thing here. Okay. Uh, community and school reflections. What have you guys been doing the last two weeks? All right.
I was able to go to Miller South. I hadn't been there in a while, but I was there and Mrs. Wilson gave me a tour. I got a chance to see the building and observe some of the classrooms. Uh, there was a lot of good things that were going on, and there was one energetic teacher that, uh, boy, she was, I thought she was a student for a while. She had so much energy, and I thought, man, we can put that energy into everybody. She was really excited and explained to me what was going on at the school and then their upcoming events and so forth, and even gave me information on them. So it was really nice to go over there and see the kids. The kids are just so, I mean, there's a lot of good kids over there. Seeing the kids come through and how they spoke to all the adults and the respect, that was just really nice. So I just wanted to be able to say that to them and thank Mrs. Wilson for allowing me to come over and give me another tour of the building.
Anyone else have anything to share? Go ahead, Tim.
A couple of things I did since the last board meeting. I was able to attend the League of Women Voters state testing talk. They had Superintendent Tom Palmers there, had our state school board member on the panel as well, and talking about the amount of testing and how it affects the classroom, children, teachers, and I thought it was interesting. Typically, when you go something for the League of Women Voters, you'll see they'll have pro and con, if you will, but not, I guess it's probably hard to find somebody that agrees with the amount of testing that's going on in the classroom, so there was really nobody there to stick up for, you know, that that's going on here and across the nation, if you will. So it was an interesting couple of hours spent. Also had the opportunity to go to Akron Council PTA Scholarship Night. They gave out over $23,000 this year to, I think, 61 students. If my memory is correct, it was around 60 students, so that was a great night. It's always good to see those students and shake their hand and congratulate them. And also, I just wanted to, I don't know if anybody or everybody saw an article in the newspaper this past weekend about Akron Public School student who started, uh, he's a beekeeper, and sort of taking charge with the legacy of Conrad Ott, if you will, and Mrs. Ott and the bees that they have in their backyard, and they share science lessons with kids at King School and St. Anthony's, if my memory is correct. And it was just a nice article. Jake's parents, also Akron Public School graduates, I happen to know both of them as well, they live in the neighborhood. So it was a very nice article. Nice to see Conrad Ott, Mr. Ott, former superintendent and former school board member recognized for that.
Okay, I have a number of things, but I'll be great. Um, over the weekend, this past weekend, was part of a community forum exploring the question of whether gun violence is a public health crisis. Um, we had a number of Akron Public School students participate in that forum, and it was very insightful and very heartbreaking at the same time to hear some of the trauma that so many of our students, more than we'd like to believe, face as a result of gun violence. I think that was a hard discussion, but a necessary one, if we're really going to support our kids in the way that they need to be supported, not only in our school district, but throughout the community. We had about, maybe about 80, 85 to 100 people there disproportionately. They were teenage students, and the things that they had to say was really alarming. Our intent is, ours being the Minority Health Roundtable Healthy Connections Network, is to continue the conversation at the same time, exploring ways that we can support our students and those families in our community. Also, last week, I don't know if I said this before, but I think it bears repeating if I did say it before, the Akron Roundtable hosted a forum as a result of some of the Beacon Journal's coverage about who would lead, and we were, at least I was honored to see Tracy Buckner was a member of that panel. And if crying because people just speak so powerfully and so directly, eloquently around the issue were possible, I probably teared up a few times, but she did a tremendous job, I think, representing not only her and her family, but representing what she represents for this district. So I just want to say, thank you for the job. Well done. Another thing, I had an opportunity to visit two of our elementaries. I went to Case, uh, you know, they gave me an open invitation to come and just visit, and I had to just say, the principal, Jones, over there, I mean, every time I walk into that building, it doesn't matter what type of day I come in, the environment is so conducive for learning. I mean, everything is in order, there's a mutual respect among the students and the teachers, it's just a marvelous thing. Not, it's just not out of the, it's not out of the ordinary, I should say, so I shouldn't speak of it in that way, but I think it's always very commendable every time you see it, and I just want to give a shout out to her and her staff over at Case. Was at Mickey Bright, uh, CLC, and just wanted to give a shout out to Principal Lucas and one of the now teachers, Ms. Sibbitt. There was an incident there while I was there where a young boy was just totally just decompensated, just really, really upset, and it was the way that they handled the little boy with such love and such honoring and such respect for his circumstances, although it probably disrupted the day for a bit, solid 15 minutes. It was the way that they kept things in order and the love that was evident in how they responded. So I just wanted to say, didn't even walk into that, but was glad I was there and to witness that and wanted to say, just a shout out to Principal Lucas and the teacher, Ms. Sibbitt. And finally, I had the opportunity to visit the grand opening of Children's Hospital's new tower yesterday. Just a beautiful place. Now, I don't want our kids to end up in the emergency room, but if there was any emergency room they have to end up in, that's the one I want them in. Just so inviting, just so, they were intentional about making it very welcoming. Uh, the, there was a, there's a, they have a wing, I guess it's like four, maybe four rows, where they're dealing with children who have mental health issues, and it's just the care they took in putting that piece together. You know, they intended to make it a place for making them feel safe and for healing. I was eager to see, I had an opportunity to do, be a chaplain for a day during leadership at Akron, and so visited NICU, NICU, which is in, not, wasn't in the best of places in the old facility, but now, it's on the seventh floor, sixth and seventh floor, light comes in from everywhere. It's just beautiful, and it's spaces where family can stay extended periods of time to help the baby get better so they can go home together. So that was my weekend. Don't be jealous the rest of you, come along, but next time, I'll call you. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything to share? It's so hard to follow her anyway. All right. And really neat things. Thank you so much. Our next order of business is we have some recognitions to do, and the first is one of our sports recognitions, and that would be, um, I forgot to ask how to pronounce your name, so forgive me, forgive me. Yotomi?
Yotomi.
Yotomi Jones, and she is here with the Kenmore Girls Basketball Team, some representatives from the Kenmore team. Um, there are a few players here. One of the things that's most impressive about Coach Jones is she's been there for about 15 years, and she's also a Kenmore graduate, which is always a nice thing to see. It says here in my dialogue that she did, they did lose two games in the regular season to Firestone, but they coached, the championship team was coached so well that they were led to an upset victory, and they also continued to do well in the state tournament, winning two games before falling to Coventry in the district semifinals, so they made it very far. So I want to have you come up, and I've got a plaque for you, or a, for you. I'd love you to introduce the girls that you brought with you. Tell us a little bit about your team.
Okay. This is, people, my girls I brought today. This is my powerhouse, Casey McCormick. She's a senior this year. Um, I'm really truly going to miss her. She's my leading rebounder, my leading shot blocker. She averages seven blocks a game. She averages 15 rebounds per game and 14 points per game. Casey is going to be well missed. She's been playing with me ever since she was in the seventh grade. She comes up to practice. Her sister used to play for me, and Casey, even coming off an ACL tear, she didn't play last season, she really dominated this year, and I'm happy for her. She's either going to Jackson State or Albea College to play basketball and major in, well, pre-law. All right.
Very nice.
Thank you. To my right is my little mini, Marsha. Marsha Smith is a senior also. I'm going to miss her. She averaged about six steals per game and about 12 points. She's small, but she can rebound the ball, honestly, with Casey rebounding like that. Then we have little Marsha sneaking in and grabbing the ball. It's awesome. She drops on the backside, she times it well, she gets in front of the girl, and she, she can jump for her height, and she grabs that rebound, she times it well. I'm going to miss her. She's going to Asbury College, and hopefully we're going to get her playing down there as well. She's quiet, she's my go-to court. I'm going to miss her. This young lady right here is Sala Richardson, and she is a freshman this year, and she came in and helped us tremendously. I ended up starting her halfway through the season. If I can get Sala to believe it herself, she's going to do a lot of great things for me in the next three years. She is one of the key pieces to us beating Firestone and playing well this year. Like you were saying, the Firestone game, we lost to them the first game. The second game, we lost in double overtime, and we had like, I think, 18 turnovers. And the last game, which was the championship game, we practiced that week before, and we practiced, and we did everything, even though they said, "It's not going to work." Everything. We practiced, we did in the game, and then some, and it just worked perfectly. I think we won by 18. It worked perfectly. We deserved it. They worked hard and they showed, and I appreciate it. Thank you so much for this.
First of all, I want to point out I wore the right colors.
Yes.
I don't know how that happens. They're going to take.
Yes. Thanks.
I think Mr. Williamson's going to take a picture. Will you get a picture already? Oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't even think about that.
That's great.
All right. And our last recognition today is of our resident educator mentors. Um, I have something to read that Mrs. Gijic put together for me that she did very well, so. Akron Public Schools established a resident educator mentor program in 2011. The purpose of the mentoring program is to offer support to our newest teachers. Mentors support new teachers by sharing content, knowledge, strategies for working with students, other staff members, parents, and community members. They also share organizational skills and ideas with new teachers. Mentors provide guidance and assist the new teachers throughout the first four years of their educational careers. There are currently 63 mentors serving in the Akron Teachers, and a copy of the complete list is in front of each of the board members. You guys each have a copy, along with two brochures about the program that you can look at. Tonight, we have a representative group of six members here to be recognized on behalf of all the mentors. So mentors, I'm going to, as I recall, or as I call your name, can you come forward? Bruce, do you want to help me and the superintendent pessies out? First is Jennifer Bevan. She is an English teacher at Firestone High School and has done four years as a mentor. She's currently mentoring two teachers. How you got time? Thank you so much. Next, Tracy Robinson. Yes, you're going to plug. She's a kindergarten teacher at Schumacher and a one, at one year as a mentor. She's currently mentoring three teachers. Amy Knopf, she's an art teacher from Robinson CLC and a four-year, she's been four years as a mentor, and she is currently mentoring one teacher. Okay. This is your first. Thank you so much. Okay. Paul Racinko. He's a program specialist in special education, has done two years as a mentor, and is currently mentoring four teachers. Congratulations. Thank you. Brenda Morgan. She's in the early learning program. She's at Case Elementary, and she's done four years as a mentor and is currently mentoring one teacher. And Valerie Skelly, who is a hospitality teacher, and she's at Bookdol. I've been to the president's room, so I know she does good things. Oh, you're not? Oh, the group, sorry, wrong one. That's why I got confused. She's at Bookdol CLC and four years as a mentor and is currently mentoring two teachers. Thank you all for being here and thank you for all of this. Does anybody, yeah, do you guys want to get a picture of all of them? Do you guys want to come up? Mr. Williamson, I think it's time. Does anybody want to say anything? You're allowed to speak, too. Can you get Alex, can you get him on?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Kelly. You're okay. I mean, Alexander did that.
You can look anywhere you like.
Thank you so much.
Okay, fear of being illegal, man.
Yes.
I noticed that Schumacher, our campus is over here, and we just want to say thank you, what a wonderful article I saw in the paper recently, just for your miss job.
But we're going in right direction.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, Mr. Black is not feeling, oh, if you guys, as busy as you are with your mentoring and your other duties, if you want to leave, you do not have to stay for the rest of the meeting. You made them all stop. They thought about it. All right, Mr. Black is not feeling well this evening, so we're going to have that graduation update at another time. But board members, if you have questions or get questions regarding graduation, please don't hesitate to call the superintendent or ask questions of Mr. Black in the meantime. The next order of business would be the approval of the meeting minutes from April 13th, 2015. Moved improperly seconded. Any questions or concerns about those? Hearing non-rolled call, please.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bravo.
Standing.
Mr. Haas.
Standing.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Sims.
Yes.
Reverend Walker.
Yes.
All right. Superintendent's recommendations. Mr. Haas, you have to pay very close attention because Mr. Pendleton does his roll calls in a different order, so stay awake.
Am I going to call Patrick?
No. Yeah, you don't, there's, there's no, yeah, don't, don't do.
So if I'm not saying something, I'm supposed to.
So you might be first sometime, so just know that's coming.
I'll do my best.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Superintendent.
Madam President, I have before me for your consideration 26 personnel recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
Move. Second.
Moved improperly seconded. Any questions or concerns? Yes.
Comment?
Yes.
We have who's retiring this, this year. Coach Yost. Joseph Yost has been around for about 40 years, helping kids, teaching. I know the kids and staff over at Teller are going to miss him greatly. He's always been like a fixture over there and always doing some, some good things. He's always turned out a lot of good athletes over there, and so we want to wish him a very good retirement, and we're going to miss him, and again, like I said, I'm sure the kids and staff at Teller will miss him as well.
Thank you for pointing that out. You said Mr. Alexander, he was coaching when you were playing basketball?
Yeah, about three years ago. Without the zero.
Very good. Anything else on personnel? Hearing non-rolled call, please.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes, I'm standing from item 24 and 25.
Mr. Haas.
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Sims.
Yes, I'm standing from item 26.
Reverend Walker.
Yes.
And at this time, Madam President.
Mr. Sanders. Sorry.
Yes, thank you. At this time, I'd like Ms. McVay to introduce one new person and one promotion on our staff.
Mr. Vasilotti, can you come forward, please? Back there in the back a little bit. I'd like to introduce to you tonight, Mr. Joe Vasilotti. He completed his undergrad degree at Miami University in Oxford in his master's degree in secondary education, English and Educational Administration from Kent State. He has over 23 years of experience working with students and has performed a variety of roles in the classroom and different athletic programs. Joe began his teaching career at Kent City Schools as an English teacher at Roosevelt High School. In addition, he was also the baseball coach and assistant football coach. While at Roosevelt, Joe was recognized as Teacher of the Year two times. He accepted a position with Norton City Schools where he performed a variety of roles as athletic director, English teacher, and head football coach. While at Norton, Joe was awarded the Suburban League Coach of the Year on two different occasions. In 2002, he moved to Thomas City Schools and served there as the head football coach and English teacher. While at Thomas, Joe was named Division Two Coach of the Year. He is also an instructor in the Sports Science Department at the University of Akron. Joe brings a wealth of knowledge and experience working with youth, sports, and students in the classroom. He is a firm believer in nurturing positive relationships both on and off the athletic field, and will strive to continue to build relationships with students and the community while building the athletic program for Akron Public Schools. He's being recommended tonight for the Coordinator of Student Services, Security, and Athletics. Congratulations.
I'm extremely grateful and honored to be selected for this important position to represent our student athletes and coaches in this capacity, very special to me. My family has been and still are involved in the Akron Public Schools of Educators, and I was born and raised here for 10 years at Old Boris Elementary School. So it's fantastic to be a part of such a fantastic school system with such talented student athletes and teachers, so I look forward to the challenge. Thank you very much.
All right, next, Barb Williams, if you'd please stand. Barb's been with us in this, at these meetings for the last year or so, but tonight we'd like to make it official. Barb obtained her bachelor's degree from Brigham Young University in 1975 in consumer economics, and then later her master's degree in learning and instructional technology from Western Governors University. After serving honorably in the U.S. Navy, Ms. Williams began her teaching career with Akron Public Schools as a member of the Department of Defense Troops to Teachers Program. She was initially employed by Akron Public Schools as the commanding officer for the Garfield Navy Junior Watsi Program in March of 1995. Ms. Williams continued in this position until August 2001, when she earned her teaching license in business information systems and became the information technology instructor at Garfield. The following year, she became an information technology instructor at Ella High School, where she remained for eight years. In 2010, Ms. Williams became a worksite coordinator, now called a pathway specialist in the College and Career Services Department. For the past year, Ms. Williams has served as the interim director in the College and Career Pathways Department. Tonight, she's being recommended as the director. Congratulations.
I just wanted to tell you how happy and honored I am to be able to serve in this position. I'm very grateful for this opportunity. I'm grateful for the people who helped me get here, and Howard especially. He's been mentor, he tried to shower on me as much knowledge as he could, and if you can imagine, that's an overwhelming experience, but I am thankful. I love working with the Career and Technical Education students. They are an awesome group. They represent the whole cross-section of Akron Public Schools, from students with disabilities to honor roll and valedictorians. We represent the entire spectrum. And these kids, I love hearing their success stories and watching what our awesome Career and Technical Education teachers are doing to help them make those successes. So we're going to try our very best to continue to expand and help them grow and succeed in life, so thank you very much for the opportunity.
Okay. Next, Madam President, I have before me for your consideration three motions and nine resolutions on the consent agenda. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
Some move. Second.
Moved improperly seconded. Any questions about consent? Questions or concerns?
These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
Some more. Second.
Moved improperly seconded. Any questions about consent? Questions or concerns? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Haas.
Yes, abstaining on item seven, please.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Sims.
Yes.
Reverend Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
And finally, Madam President, I have before me for your consideration 13 business affairs recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
Second.
Moved improperly seconded. Questions or comments about business affairs?
I need to ask a question about item number seven. So, in my head, I imagine people going to the building and picking up mail and taking it to Cleveland. How does that work? Seventy-five thousand dollars.
All right. Let's go back a little bit and explain how mail works in the district.
You don't have to go back that far. I guess just.
All mail in the district for U.S. Postal Services is picked up by our pony trucks. They come here twice a day. And they are then processed to put on postal services, postage through a mail machine and a contract with Pitney Bowes currently. The mail, U.S. Postal Service changed their processing a number of years ago in which everything has to be presorted and barcoded. So therefore, we have a presorted mail service company, Miller Presort, that has provided the additional barcode. We've been doing this for over a decade. When they announced at the U.S. Postal Service that they were going to start consolidating and closing processing centers, Akron held out as long as it could and then it actually closed as of April 17th. In the process of being informed of that, we were told in order to keep our discounted rates, which we get substantial discounts because of the way we do our own postage and processing, we would have to move our mail receiving to the Cleveland Processing Center. Now, you are correct. The postman does walk into every school and bring a certain amount of mail that is directed to the school. But everything that comes out of here goes through our pony room mail sorting issue here in administration. So what you didn't know is for us to get our flats, I want you to think of large bundles of mail, any kind of report cards, any kind of student testing, any employee contracts that go through here had to then be either delivered to Wolf Ledges originally at 5:00 PM at the close of the business day to be processed, or it was then taken to Five Points in the morning to pick up. And we've been doing that for a long time with our custodial service staff making those runs twice daily for us. Any certified mail went directly also to Wolf Ledges. In putting this together to meet the needs of this closure, it became very evident that we could no longer have our postal services be done by our custodial services. So in talking to several processing companies, including Miller's, who's currently working for us, to get us through the last contract year of our Pitney Bowes machine, which will expire in '16, I asked Miller to give us a proposal along with several others to pick up the service of actually picking up our mail and bringing it to us. The most effective one to use currently is Miller. They would, because they're already picking up mail for the other hospital and county and city divisions here in the Akron area. They can drop off our mail at 8:30 in the morning, pick up what we have ready from the five o'clock before, you know, from the night before, and then do the same on the presort, which they've been doing at two o'clock. Once it gets to Cleveland, they will take it directly there after it's barcoded and then send it out and we're allowed to keep our discounts. If I turned it over directly to U.S. Postal Services, which I did try, and please understand, they couldn't get here at the same time, they would forget us to come on several days. If they had no carrier available, they didn't substitute them. And they, if they came in the morning, they forgot to come in the afternoon. Our mail is too timely in order to get out with court notices, documents for employees with contracts, various mail that need to be gotten to students in a timely fashion. So therefore, this is the most advantageous item that I put together before I then write an RFP in the spring to then see what other vendors would want to take on full service, including putting postage on, starting with August of '16.
Wow.
Wow. I never, you know what? We talked about E-rate and child nutrition. Wait till you deal with U.S. Postal Services.
Okay, I just want one quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
So the ponies, they used to go out around to the other.
It still does.
Bring it to here, and still brings it here.
Yes.
So where does the post office pick it up? Where does your, this service provider pick the mail up? From here?
At two o'clock, they pick it up from here. At 8:30 in the morning, that coming in that is at Five Points in our flats is what they'll bring and pick up for us and bring it directly to here so we can then put it in the ponies to put it out to the schools.
And then the pony, we will do our stuff.
Yeah.
So this service just picks up our mail and takes it to post office in Cleveland. Then they bring us mail back and we pay them seventy-five thousand dollars.
Well, but understand, that includes the additional barcode, getting it processed and picking, and, and doing already what they've done. You've been doing this for years, you just didn't realize it because it's part of our regular postal annual cost of $200,000 for our mail to be mailed using postal service. This does not include FedEx and it does not include any other special packaging. But we can now put those packages in there in this process as well.
Didn't you tell me that the seventy-five thousand's actually going to be tucked into the $200,000 budget you already have?
Yes, it does not, it does not increase our current annual budgeted amount. We have, understand, that very closely decreasing the U.S. Postal Service for a couple of different ways. You know, the student packet that goes out and is mailed each August contains amount of information that you have been over a number of years mailing as individual pieces to every student and every family. So now that's been consolidated to that one mailing. With the increased use of our all-call system to get information out to families using our telephone system, we've decreased our mailing costs as well. So this is one of those things that as the postal service changes the way it wants your mail to be labeled and barcoded, this service has to increase to do so.
We had to do this at our job as well because of the change. It, it's especially the way it has to be sorted because they sort it by, in order to do bulk mailings especially, the, you have to sort it by zip code.
And you have to sort it by location.
Right. So it's not something that's easily done, not mechanically.
Processing centers are wonderful providing that your mail meets their needs. If your mail does not meet your needs, they will reject it and return it to you. And we cannot afford those delays.
It's gotten stricter and stricter with the increase in email and the increase in, and the decrease in, in postage use, the restrictions have gotten.
And the federal requirement that they must do their budget the way they do, they're trying to make sure that they consolidate their services as well as they consolidate the need to do ours. And the other thing that's good about this is as we take this on and get used to doing it this way, then our custodial staff that is assigned here as well as our pony trucks and stuff, we can see some, some substantial savings in allowing them to do the normal items that they would be expected to do for custodial services because they're not necessarily tied up with mail. And understand, when you do report cards and you're doing those four times a year, this is the easiest one I can explain to you. Imagine what a mailing 20,000 report cards does. It just stops everything. They have to be printed, they have to be sorted, they have to be barcoded, they have to be properly mailed. And that doesn't even include just the newsletters that, that schools want to send out so that they can go ahead and get on information to the parents regarding their programs or, you know, if I have a contract, say for IVB or BPA or STEM or whatever, any of those items that need to go to families need to be gotten to them within timeframes that are stated. And to not follow this process, to give it to Akron and allow it could delay your mail two to five days. And if you've never taken a call from somebody who thinks they're waiting on a paycheck to come in the mail, because it should hit the mail on Thursday afternoon to be there on Friday, and if it doesn't hit it just right, it's to wait till Saturday, or it's to wait till Monday, or it's to wait till Tuesday. If it's an actual check, that impacts an employee very severely.
And now we're going to talk about employees' checks, not seventy-five thousand dollars. We're talking about report cards.
We talk about all of it.
The big issue, maybe because it's standing alone there, kind of was glaring, seventy-five thousand. You're saying it's, it's a part of that 200 and.
It's a part of the budget that's already there.
She came up to the table, asked if I was satisfied with the answer yes, with the amount of money, no.
No, I mean, that's what I'm trying to get at. If they're picking it, okay, this somehow is beyond my understanding, because seventy-five dollars just seems like.
And that's an estimate. It, as I said, it's an estimate based on what kind of mail, mailing we do. And that mailing fluctuates depending on what we have to get out. If we don't have to mail certain testing materials or testing notifications to parents, fine, then, then we don't need to mail it. But some of it is dictated by what provision we have to do to get informations to parent, parents by law.
Yes. How are you doing?
Item number three, and Mrs. McWilliams, if you can share with us, we talked about this in our committee meeting, and I just wanted to lift it up so that we might be aware that there are teaching tools, apps that are available for board members and staff and students, that you might be able to get on that app or program and get a tutorial, maybe 10 minutes, 15 minutes tutorial about Word or something else that you might need some assistance in. And it's available to all of us. And you can continue.
Yeah, Atomic Learning is a wonderful, wonderful resource that we have in the district that has short video tutorials that can step you through every single technology need that you would ever have in your life. And it also has some curricular tutorials. I'm going to make it, send out to the board a link so that you can go right to it with your login information. I'll send individually to everyone so that you can try it out, but literally Excel, the Google Docs, Word, any technology need that you would ever have. And the great thing is it's just a few minutes. It's not a one-hour training course. They're three to five minutes long, just on specific skills that you may need. You can also post video trainings. That's where we post trainings for diabetes education, for example, our child abuse videos to prevent child abuse, that'll be posted there. So it's going to be a resource that we'll be able to push out videos as well.
You mean, we don't have to ask a 13-year-old anymore? We can.
That's correct. See? You can, you can impress your teenagers.
You might have to ask how to get to the site.
Download the app. Can you help me put the app on here?
Let's get the app.
That's great. It's always good to not have to feel inadequate to the 13-year-old. Anything else? That's fantastic. Thank you for pointing that out. All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Sims.
Yes.
Reverend Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Mr. Haas.
Yes.
I told you. That's why I warned you. I forgot to warn you about that.
I know, I haven't been first yet. I know that.
Tonight or ever?
Oh, yeah, the last one I could do.
Really not much to report, but I went through the House budget bill that's been passed through our Ohio A group and of course, we'll have to wait to see what the Senate is going to do and then the governor ultimately. So we're still working away and I think Ohio A will schedule a meeting with some of the legislators as we continue to move through this budget process, getting information so we understand where a five-year forecast is going to be.
And that's coming up?
Yes.
I just have a few kind of bullet points. First of all, I loved hearing Barb's story. I almost feel like I wish that we would have a day where we got to hear the whole senior staff's story. Isn't it amazing the things that we learn and the incredible staff that we have at Akron Public Schools? And just listening and hearing about the history is just fantastic. So I'm super excited and I think we might put that on the agenda and have you guys all have to go around and introduce yourselves and tell you, tell us more because it's so interesting to learn. I wanted to point out that tomorrow is College and Career Ready Day in Akron Public Schools. All the juniors are taking ACT. I don't know what all, who goes to the universities? Sophomores go to the universities. And seniors can work on their essays and work with counselors.
And applications.
And applications. Yeah, so tomorrow is a really big day in Akron Public Schools. I already told my son, early to bed tonight, girlfriend goes home early, those kind of things. So he's not very happy, but, because he's got the ACT. So it, just the way this day has evolved from us just, not that just giving all the juniors in the district was no big deal, but, because that's a huge deal. It's an incredible opportunity for them to either take it for the first time or for the second time and just help them be ready. But the way it's evolved so that all of our high schoolers and even the middle school, there's, there's things that are going on so that we can have them start to be college and career ready is super incredibly exciting and I think we're doing an amazing job with that. Wanted to mention briefly the tragedy that's happened in Nepal and that we do have Akron Public School families and students who's, who have come from that country and have been affected. So just, just a thought to keep them in your, in your prayers and, and send some, some hope for that because that's such a tragic situation. And just two more kind of interesting things. This week is the last concert for Mr. Langreter, who is another establishing teacher for Miller South, and he'll be having his last concert. So if anyone would like to come to that, that's Thursday evening. And I also just wanted to mention, I know Mrs. Bevan was here and I didn't get a chance to, to talk about it while she was, but Dr. White, who's been a, a teacher at Firestone since the school opened, I think she was one of the very first.
She was there when I was there.
Yeah, she's been, it's over 40 years she's been there now, I believe. She held her Hamlet Oscars. If you've never had a chance to go and see the projects that they do for Hamlet, it is a hoot and the talent and the amazing things that these students do. It was her 15th annual since they've been shooting videos. And they give out Oscar awards to the best films. And they have to shoot Hamlet in, in a unique and original way. And they take the original stories, sometimes they take original lines. But then I know there was, oh, this year there was a Grease version where they put it to the characters of Grease and yet they had to act out Hamlet. There's been Star Wars versions, there've been, it's, it's incredibly original and very fun. So if you've never had a chance to do that, please check that out. It'll be this time of year again next year. And I just wanted to thank Dr. White for so many years of service. I didn't know you had her.
I didn't have.
Oh, you didn't have her?
But she was there, I mean, long before I was even in high school.
Yeah.
Graduated a long, long time ago.
Just a few years. Phew, it's getting personal. But thank, thank her for all of her hard work. And that's all I have. So now we're to Mr. Pendleton.
Two items tonight. I'm, I'm saving my reports for next month when we have the forecast. So the first item is the schedule for next month. And I, and I ran this by the board president, vice president, but just so you can notate it if you want to get engaged in the forecast a little bit more. On May 11, at that board meeting, I'll do the forecast presentation. You're free to ask questions. I'll get you an advanced copy of it as timely as I can. We'll go through the presentation, take as long as you need. On the 18th, we'll take it to committee. So Finance Committee has a meeting scheduled on the 18th. If there's more detailed questions about the assumptions or some of the things that are driving state budget, where we're at in that process, please attend. So we'll, we'll be publicly notified. You can attend that meeting and then we'll approve on the 26th. So it gives plenty of opportunity on my side to see what we can do from the Senate and Legislature to get the full impact of the budget to where we see, make some estimates. We may have to come back and, you know, rephrase that. We are likely to come back in June and do an update to the forecast. So we won't know the full budget details until the end of June. Second item is in your financial packet, month ending March, our financial report. We've tried to detail those pluses and minuses again for where the House Subcommittee emerged. And just last. And just last week, they added in their proposal a hundred million dollars to the governor's budget to hold that tangible personal property tax reimbursement, which was about $5.6 million for us, hold all the districts harmless. Some good news. We'll see how it emerges through the Senate, but just wanted to keep track of that for you. That concludes my report.
All right, committee reports. I see we have some from legal and policy. Do you want to start first?
Yes. This is the second of three readings for prior approval. Policy 5330, revised use of medication. Policy 7530.02, which is new staff use of personal communication devices. Policy 7540.03, revised student education technology acceptable use and safety. And policy 7540.04, revised staff education technology acceptable use and safety. That is the second of three readings.
Thank you very much. Anything from finance?
Just briefly, I'd like to thank Staff Administration Building and the O.T. Building. They had their annual March Project Rise collection, collected almost a thousand dollars for Project Rise. So thank you, everybody here and the other building.
Thank you. Anything else from instructional policy and student achievement? Yes.
Thank you. I too just want to turn and say, Barb, thank you so much for the way you stepped into the shoes of Mr. Howard and done just a tremendous job. You know, there hasn't been a time I haven't reached out to you, you haven't been responsive. You always sound very energetic, and now hearing your history, I now know why you are the way that you are. So I say thank you, and we look forward to having a good, productive, long relationship with you. Tonight, just want to say thank you for instructional committee. We adopted new updated career education grade courses and study for some of our career education programs. We haven't had an opportunity to really look closely at those documents. It's really an amazing piece. You know, sometimes you take a course and you really don't know really what it's about. It kind of lays it out there in such a way that you, if you're going to go down this career path, you have a much clearer sense of what it is you're doing. So it takes the guesswork side out of, at least for, I would think, as a student. And it reminds me of when you're ready to go to college, you get that same kind of setup. So I think this really helps our students get acclimated, in addition to it gives them a better sense of what they'll be doing or what the course is all about. The new grade courses studies are in response to a positive change announced by Ohio Department of Education that will take effect over the next three years. Reverend Walker and I have asked Dr. Williams, Nick Williams, to schedule a presentation this summer for Ms. Williams, our newly permanent-appointed Director of College and Career Pathways, to go into greater detail regarding these reforms and tightly-aligned career education or workforce needs in our community. So we look forward to the presentation.
Anything? Anybody else? Yes.
Just got a quick question. Is that one sitting out here?
Yes.
Okay. I was reading earlier tonight the finance curriculum, and I thought I've got some brushing up to do.
Is it about twenty-six something months? It says thirty-one. Thirty-one. Yeah, so all of the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Lots of full disclosure.
So the whole idea is to get people to take your place. So you don't, don't you go brush up?
All right. I don't think we have any unfinished business. Oh, we do have unfinished business.
Well, I guess not. I guess we have to go on to new business.
Okay. Well, then, new business. Let's move on to that.
Well, I just wanted to, again, congratulate, compliment, applaud Patrick for representing not only himself, but representing the board. He was in the paper at least twice, leading the group in Pittsburgh to, I believe, was, I don't know if it was Leadership Akron or Accommodation Leadership Akron and...
Tracy too.
And Tracy. These fine new leaders. I don't know what they're saying about us old leaders, but these fine new leaders that are with us, so Sister Buckner and Patrick Bravo. It puts a face to what we do and for people to see that we have excellent leaders among us. I was a little bit, maybe not upset, but when there was an article about leadership before, no one paid attention to our leadership and our diversity on the board, our senior staff, all the diversity, and even young persons that are involved. And we were sort of left out, I think, of that equation, even city council, young person diversity that are part of that when the article was made. So I was, it was really nice seeing you all being a part of that and having a front page on that. So that spoke well for what you're doing, and I know, and all that you do, it does have a bearing on us as public servants. And so congratulations.
Just other business. You know, we all attended, a few of us attended Dave Lombardi's...
Investor chair.
Exactly. And so our very own Reverend Walker was there to bless the whole process, and, I mean, just spoke so, again, very eloquently and powerfully. I didn't tear up as much, but he did just another example of leadership and how the persons in this room represent this system out to the public. The second thing I just want to say is if you haven't had the time to consider the challenge, the Williams challenge, please consider this. For disclosure, Kay Williams is my aunt. The late Kay Williams is my aunt, and my uncle Frank has been doing this for a number of years. I can't play golf, but I'd be willing to team up with you many guys and just take me on as a handicap, because that's just the way I would be to you. But I'm a good cheerleader, so if there's anybody who's interested in doing that, I'd be happy to be your partner.
All right. Anything else? Yes?
I don't know who got the pens for us, but I want to thank them for getting the pens. Nice little pill pens to have, so thank them for giving us those little pill...
Yeah, those are nice. They are very nice.
Feel important, huh?
That's all it took. All right. We actually have no reason to go into executive session this evening. So that's Jason's gift for his coming back. And so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Reverend Walker.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Bravo.
Yes.
Mr. Hoss.
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield.
Yes.
Yes.
One time.